All right, all. I will call to order the City of Milton County Council meeting this Tuesday, September 2nd at 6:00 PM. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Hometown Ace Hardware and Milton Piggly Wiggly.
Thank you. Approval of agenda. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. So we have a few people signed in, so you're welcome to make a public comment now. Step up to the podium. Name, address, please keep it under three minutes, or if you want to wait, it's a specific agenda item, wait till that item is called. So anybody that wants to speak now, go ahead. Otherwise, you'll get a chance when we talk about your agenda item.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chad Bruzsky. I live on Chapel Drive, right around the bend, and I know this is an agenda topic, but I wanted to bring forth some information and what's kind of going on in my neck of the woods. There's no question Milton's growing. It doesn't take long to find heavy equipment, dirt, new buildings, and in my opinion, I believe that is a good thing. I've always been taught to be a part of the solution and not part of the problem. And in our neighborhood, they're building a new apartment complex, and I've been really focused on being part of the solution, being a good neighbor. But we're at the point now where I'm starting to question some things, and I wanted to bring some of that to your attention, because if you don't know, you don't know. So I do challenge you to take a drive down Chapel Drive and look at the current state of our road and the building that is going on. Since April, my family has had to listen to wood chippers and construction activity, which is neither here or there. I understand that I work in a concrete business, and that is part of it. But there hasn't been a lot of progress made, and there's been a lot of setbacks, which I understand. But my biggest issue is safety and on the worksite and on the job site and everyone around. It's really clear when you pull up, you can see a boat in a shed that is about to fall down into this construction site, and it has become quite the problem. When it rains, I believe I sent some pictures. I hope you can see them. But there is a crazy amount of silt and fine material that flows into our wastewater and runoff that could be a problem down in the line. And there hasn't been much effort to fix these problems as I watch all the dirt run down our road every day. And the biggest concern, in my opinion, is the lack of fencing. They put up some snow fencing around the top, which is probably about a 40-foot face wall, which then leads to some steel I-beams. So I was 10 years old one time, and I'd be pretty inclined to climb some big rock piles. This is a big issue to me since I have a three-year-old and a one-year-old at home. So it won't be long, and I'll be really chasing them around. I challenge you to go volunteer and cut the neighbors' grass up on top and see what you think the view is like with a snow fence that is now falling into the pit. Trees are falling into the pit. Root systems on our fence line are 50% gone. One good north wind probably going to land on my property in my house. We got dirt workers. We got contractors that have been very kind to me, complain and say this is very unsafe. Concrete workers refuse to work on that job site for over a month, which forcing more setbacks. I get that. So my big concern is safety. Every day I hope that I don't come home to see an ambulance and a huge amount of dirt on top of someone, a piece of equipment, or even my home. I know this isn't on the agenda, so I just wanted to voice my opinion, let everyone know I do challenge you to take a little cruise down there and check it out. What else was on there?
We're in time.
That we're at that time. Perfect. I tried to quicken up. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Wants to speak now? Sure. Just your name and address in three minutes, please.
I'm Paul Snyder. I live at 411 Prairie View Circle, and I'm one of the people up on the hill behind the same area of the new construction. And my, I'm surprised at how long it is taking to actually put up the building when I look at down the road and see all these other constructions going up and they're done. I was a little disappointed just to see all the trees gone. I know we're in the city, and the owner can do whatever they want with the property. Okay, I can, I can accept that. However, earlier, last year, when a tree had fallen over onto my property from their property, I don't know who owns it. I don't recall the name of the people who own it, but the facility in Illinois, I called them up and said, "This is coming over. It is down. I want to know if I can or need to cut it. I do not want my granddaughter, who lives with me, to go out in our backyard and have a tree fall on her." And I didn't get any response. And then I called again, didn't get any response. And then I came and had one of the officers just come and take a look. I forget the gentleman's name, but... Now, parroting what was said before, the, where they first cut into the hillside and made a 35-foot cliff, that cut was about 15 feet away from my property line, or the back property line. When I went back to look a little bit later, I noticed some of my posts were missing, the markers, property markers. I forget the term. Sorry. I'm excitedly nervous, but I think we're doing okay. The other thing is just the safety factor. There's a 30-foot cliff. Again, any kid, they're not always going to ask, "Hey, that looks fun. Can I go play there?" That's a dangerous area. There are now exposed wires. The fall-in has come back at about 10 feet into the property line, taken down additional trees, not on the owner's property, but on other property behind. And what is at jeopardy now is my neighbor who has the boat and the shed. Those are in jeopardy just because of natural erosion. When I lived in California, I didn't see anything like that on when they built into the side. Okay, so, safety, health, it's taken a long time. I don't know what they're doing, when they're going to do it, even what they're going to put up for a wall. I guess it has to be a six-foot-high wall. I don't know how far they're going to put anything off the property line like us other property owners. So I'm losing safety, a nice back view. Safety, 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 and how long it's taking, and really, what are they doing, and I'm seeing...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else that cares to speak at this point in our program? Okay. We will move on then to number five, Mayor proclamation for Halloween. I'll read it. Whereas the City of Milton wishes a safe and festive Halloween celebration for its citizens and encourages participation in the gaiety of this holiday by both young and old, and whereas miniature ghosts, goblins, witches and other mysterious creatures emerge each year on October 31st, and whereas they ring doorbells to their neighborhood and friends to extort goodies, and whereas the safety of these small creatures is assured by accompanying adult and is source of amusement and good cheer for both the very young and older people whom they visit and entertain. Whereas I, Eric Stockman, Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaim Friday, October 31st, 2025, Halloween in the City of Milton. Therefore, let it be known that Friday, October 31st, 2025, shall be known as Halloween Trick or Treat Day, and the celebration will be observed between the hours of 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. Signed, the 2nd day of September, 2025. Agenda item number six, approval of minutes.
So...
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number seven, discussion and possible action regarding special event permit received from Good Works Brewing Company LLC for the rescheduled Good Times Roll car cruises. Any issues on the city's side from Public Works, Mark, or...
I don't have anything.
Nothing? Chief?
None from the police department.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I have one point. It's not within the 30 days, but because we originally received the application, I'm okay with it. But I don't want to set precedent that any new applications, we are just going to approve if they don't meet the 30-day requirement of being submitted before that time.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Sorry, Ryan. I'll give you more time next time. Number eight, discussion and possible action regarding the intersection traffic control at John Paul Road and Madison Avenue, State Highway 59, and ordinance 2025-569 amending section 70-111 concerning through streets.
On May 6th, 2025, the Council directed staff to proceed with conversations with WISDOT to add an always-stop at the intersection of John Paul Road and Madison Avenue. Staff met with WISDOT Traffic Engineering and Signing Staff on-site August 5th. The attached application includes a signing plan prepared and discussion with WISDOT staff at the onsite meeting. Installation of an always-stop is listed as an interim solution in the approved Highway Safety Improvement Program project that is planned for 2030. The grant application was prepared by WISDOT due to a high incidence of crash rates at the intersection, causing the location to be included in a WISDOT Location of Interest report. Installation of traffic control at this location also requires revision to the City Ordinance 70-111 concerning through streets. Staff anticipates the cost for the installation of the always-stop to be approximately $3,000 to $4,000. This amount is less than what was estimated in the his of application and based on the signing plan developed in discussion with WISDOT. If during the approval process with WISDOT, additional signage is required, additional costs may be incurred. Staff is seeking direction on whether or not to proceed. We have submitted the application to WISDOT for approval of the stop, the always-stop. If council does elect to proceed at this time, we would suggest approving the first reading of the ordinance and, or approving the first reading at this time and waiting for the response from WISDOT regarding the approved application.
Thank you. So now, if there's anybody that was waiting for this agenda item would like to share, I knew there's at least one.
How'd you know? Hi, guys. I'm Pete Petroff. I self-charge John Paul Road, Milton. Glad to see we're moving forward on the stop signs. Makes logical sense that we spend $4,000 for a stop sign versus $1.4 million for the roundabout that we're interim fixing. Just be aware that when you start talking about the roundabout, the roundabout as proposed by WISDOT has never been built in Wisconsin. When we talked to the engineer, he told us there is not one around within driving distance. So this is an experimental project when you guys start talking roundabout. This is not something that's designed for human traffic. Every time a car goes in, the person's looking to the left. You've got four intersections that have children crossing that, so I'll move on from the roundabout. It's frustrating to hear that this is an interim solution, but four questions for us, basically. Will these stop signs all have flashing lights to gather attention?
The plans that have been submitted, based on those discussions, have the red flashers on top of the stop signs on Madison Avenue, not John Paul Road. So John Paul would stay the same. Madison Avenue would have the red flashes.
And why would we do that?
That was the recommendation from WISDOT.
If we're concerned about safety, wouldn't we just put red lights on all four?
We certainly can. I think the thought processes of those stop signs exist, so they were looking to add additional attention, or try to draw additional attention to the new stop signs.
Well, we know that there are obstacles from North John Paul and South John Paul. If you're on North John Paul, you have parking within 15 feet of the stop sign. So you've got cars blocking that stop sign to begin with. Coming up South John Paul, you've got the big Milton sign to go to the pool, go to the whatever. You've got lots of signage there that is distracting. I would recommend adding a couple of red flashing lights. What's the cost?
The southbound directional sign you referenced will be relocated farther south, and the cost for the red lights are around $1,200 apiece.
Cheap compared to 1.4 million, right? Okay. And then will there be advance warning, at least in the interim or short-term, advising people that there's a new stop sign ahead, coming both directions, east and west?
There's a stop-ahead signs that will be added on east and westbound Madison Avenue for those new stop signs, and there will be red flags attached to those as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Again, be very leery about that roundabout. They're not built for pedestrian traffic, and we have children going across it every day. And who's going to shovel them in winter? Somebody's going to have to get out there, because the plow is going to make a mess. Okay, all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Is there anyone else that care to speak to this item? Then I'll open it up for discussion.
The, Mr. Holbrook asked if the design you feel will be better received than the one on Parkview and Blanche when that was installed. And I think with the warning signs and the flashing signs, it is a step up from what was placed on Parkview, but I'll let Chief address that for you, Ryan.
Mr. Holbrook, I believe that the design implemented by WISDOT and approved, or agreed upon with Public Works Superintendent Langer is better than what we had at Parkview and Blanche. Parkview and Blanche, when that was set up with the new signs, was implemented prior to the roadway being expanded, which is why the signs were further off from the traveled section of the roadway. Whereas here we have existing roadway where we're just installing signs and giving fair warning that Parkview did not have, absent just the warning flags atop the stop sign. So with the stop-hads being installed and adjusted for southbound traffic, or excuse me, for the northbound, no, southbound traffic, it'll be a step in the right direction and shouldn't, it'll definitely help that intersection with the issues that it's currently facing.
I just want to make sure that we don't cause more problems, more accidents than we're trying to face.
Yeah, I think we're moving in the right direction to minimize the amount of accidents at that intersection by, with the recent speed reduction and now adding that four-way stop.
Is there any kind of communication that we could get out ahead of putting up those signs? Like talking to Right Way? I mean, I'm assuming we would let them know, because they're on a bus path or... I know a lot of the community is waiting for the stop signs, so maybe we could do like a communication blast or something on social media or something?
I did have a conversation with the Buildings and Grounds Director at the school district, who's sharing it internally at the school at least. Certainly when we know what the final approved signing plan will be, based on DOT's response, we could determine a date for installation, and we could push that out via social media channels.
What's the turn time on that? Like, we put forth the review, and then when do we hear from them, do you think?
I submitted it to WISDOT last week. I'm hopeful we'll have a response relatively soon, but I don't know.
Mark, with your experience, when you, when you project if we approve today, when would they, you think they'd be up and installed by October, November?
Lead time on the red beacons is approximately two weeks. So once we get approval, we'll get those ordered, and then installation of the signs will take a day. So yeah, I mean, I would say within three to four weeks of approval, I don't see any issue having them installed. Maybe sooner, maybe faster.
Yeah, I would like, when I'm dropping kids off, I've seen a lot of crazy stuff happen at that intersection. You know, watching people, you know, sitting in traffic, and then they don't feel like waiting anymore, so then they try to flip a U-turn right on, you know, North John Paul, and then there's a car coming. They almost hit each other. I think the stop sign, you know, would be a very welcomed addition. I've also heard from two community members in the last week who actually brought that up to me. So that they're, they heard about it, and they're really looking forward to something being done, because right now it's, everyone kind of feels it's a little bit of a safety hazard. So happy to see we're doing something about it.
I would move to have the staff proceed with WISDOT application for an always-stop at the intersection of John Paul Road and Madison Avenue and adopting ordinance number 2025-569, adopting of the first and waiving the second, third readings.
Second.
The, as, the recommendation of Mr. Langer was, in reference to the ordinance, to approve the first reading only, because we do not yet have DOT approval of the four-way stop. And so we don't want to have this in effect until that's approved.
That's why you get paid the big money. All right, then, just approve the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number nine, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance 2025-570 amending section 74-173B1 concerning building sewer connections.
The City Council adopted, adopted an updated sanitary sewer use ordinance in 2023. This action here tonight recommends clarification to the lateral connection section to require separate laterals for every building, duplex unit and unit with a separate exterior ground level entrance. The Public Works Committee reviewed and recommended adoption of this proposed change at the August 12th, 2025 meeting. There's no expense to the city for approving the ordinance, other than the staff time for review and implementation. City administration and the Public Works Committee recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-570 concerning building sewer connections.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mark, is there any, has there been any issues with laterals being clogged or something?
Well, we had one, it's mostly a clarification of the language, the way it's written. The intent is for it to be separate. It was not written as clear as this revision is. So we did have a question from a builder, and that's what brought it to our attention, so.
Okay.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the, many of the ordinance 2025-570, section 74-173B1 concerning building sewer connections.
Just for clarification, is your intent of the motion to approve the first reading, waive second and third, and adopt?
With the intent to waive the second and third readings.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number 10, discussion and possible action regarding a simplified rate case submission to the Wisconsin Public Service Commission for Water Rates.
City Council has directed staff to pursue a water rate case with the Public Service Commission to adjust water rates. A simplified rate case is a more streamlined alternative to a full rate case. It allows for a full, or it allows for a rate increase amount predetermined by the PSC to account for inflationary increases. The first step in this process is to provide public notice of the rate increase. If the council wishes to proceed with the proposed simplified rate case, the attached draft notice will be published in the Genzo Gazette. The tentative schedule for the rate case is to publish the public notice on September 5th, submit the PSC application on September 15th. Rates will become effective October 30th, and the first billing with new rates would be January 15th, 2026. If approved by the PSC, the simplified rate case results in a 3% increase in customers' water rates effective with the January 2026 billing.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion here?
Mark, briefly, just real quick for me. I tried to go back and review what we, but I couldn't find it again, what we had gone over. And the benefit is just it's going to be some more stable rate for our residents, or, other than the 3% increase, what's the benefit for this?
Doing rate case, or doing rate review and possible increases more often, generally you'll see a more consistent, or a smaller increase, but maybe more consistently. If you wait a longer period of time when you do a rate case, costs have increased, and that's where you hear these, the stories of the 20, 30, 40% rate increases. So doing the simplified rate case, the amount is predetermined by the PSC, and the process is, is much more streamlined.
Mark, I got a question to the, kind of extending what Kevin was asking, is with the simple versus the full rate case, the advantage, from my understanding of a full rate case, is you get to, you do a full financial analysis of the situation, where the simplified is more formula-based and not necessarily requiring or taking into consideration a full financial analysis each time. So I guess my question is, if we switch to a simple rate case, what's the, what's the plan for like full financial analysis, therefore?
Our utility budgets, we account for costs and capital improvement projects. The PSC does limit the, I think, I think, do you know, Paul, I think it's two or three simplified before you're required to do a full rate case, so there's a limitation with that. At some point, yes, we will have to do a full rate case. I think, again, we're, we've talked about rates a couple times with some of the service line inventory work that's been happening and the lead service requirements. So this is something that provides an opportunity for an incremental increase in rates now, and, you know, we'll be able to continue reviewing rates as we go forward, which, which we do internally. But yeah, a full rate case, it would need to happen at some point in the future.
Any other questions or comments or a motion? Any other questions or comments or, uh, motion?
I would recommend, um, the motion to recommend proceeding with the simplified rate case.
A second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding request for proposals, city attorney, municipal court services only.
The city of Milton currently contracts with Kinsini Law Firm to provide legal representation, which includes municipal court-related services. Following a recommendation from the municipal judge and court clerk, staff is requesting approval to issue a request for proposals to seek attorneys for municipal court-related services with a new contract beginning in January of twenty twenty-six. Staff has reviewed the current arrangement and defined, identified the need to evaluate and potentially strengthen the scope and quality of legal services for municipal court. Conducting an RFP process will allow the city to consider the most qualified and competitive candidates to ensure high-quality representation moving forward. Uh, there is no immediate fiscal impact associated with issuing the request for proposals other than staff time. However, proposals received will have financial implications for future budgets. City administration recommends approving the issuance of the request for proposals for city attorney municipal court services.
Thank you.
Chief, uh, under the contract, what's the, uh, the minimum amount of time an officer needs to be notified before they get to go ahead even without going to court? But be, uh, still get that overtime rate, the minimum call-in rate. What is it? I don't know how, is it three hours of overtime pay or minimum or what?
They would, officers would receive two hours pay, uh, for a late notice for court. And that needs to be received at least forty-eight hours in advance, I believe, of their court appearance or their scheduled court time.
Has this been happening a lot lately?
Yeah, um, I don't have the exact numbers. I'd have to speak with our court clerk regarding the amount of it. But, yeah, it's, there have been a fair amount of instances for late notifications to our court clerk who then in turn notifies the officer.
I make a motion to approve the issuance of request for proposal for city attorney municipal court services.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number twelve, review of the twenty twenty-six budget schedule.
In your packet, you have the twenty twenty-six budget schedule. Um, it, uh, follows past practices, uh, that we used, um, to review the budget for approving and adopting. Um, and then a different night for, than the public hearing. Attaches to schedule. If anyone has any questions, please let me know.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-six budget schedule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries. All right, thirteen, general items, uh, committee reports. If anyone has a committee report they want to share.
I can share the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, is, they have been continually working on the interpretive sign project and they did meet and finalize, uh, four of those. Uh, so those will be ordered soon. So that includes the Parkview Historic District, the Milton House, the, um, excuse me, the Goodrich House and then one in front of the Splash Pad. So it's the, those interpretive signs will be discussing the history of those properties. Um, and then also at Historic Preservation Commission, we did receive a request from the Milton House for a couple of their staff members to attend the Wisconsin Historical Society Preservation Conference. Uh, and the commission did approve allocating funds from their budget for that.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else? See none. Okay, staff reports, Mr. Langer.
Vincent Street was paved last week. Contractor pulverized down in front of Milton Propane in the dog park area there and ran repave that. The water main installation is nearly complete outside of some, uh, connections on First Lane. The work will pro- progress this week with water service replacements. And then following that, they will move to, uh, pavement replacements, pavement repair and replacements. Um, Shumway Pond project out here behind City Hall, uh, got an update from the contractor today. I still need to kind of look through that, but it looks like that should be wrapping up here, uh, sometime late September. Um, but other than that, just kind of business as usual.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
I wanted to touch base on the water rate increase request to the PSC. Um, just so the public's aware, the average residential customer would see two dollars over a two-month period in the change of their bill. This would be up, keeping up with inflation and this is something that we have not done since two thousand nine. Um, so that's important to know. Um, started, uh, trying to work with the DOT to acquire some land, uh, back to the city and back to property owners, uh, when they abandoned Highway twenty-six. And, uh, our comprehensive plan team is going to be present at Community Days on September thirteenth to, uh, get input, uh, face-to-face at that event. So that'll be real neat and I encourage everyone to attend.
Thank you. Jenny?
So I recently attended the Clerks Conference, which is, um, a conference where all the clerks in the state of Wisconsin come. And so it was really great and I appreciate the opportunity for training. Um, one of the items that was kind of a hot topic is communications, um, whether that be social media or other types of media. So we're going to be looking at some different options in the future that will increase our communication, uh, to all people within the city. Um, also improvements to our website was a discussion, um, and things that, again, ways people are using it and how we can get it out there a little bit more. Uh, I know Paul alluded to this a little bit at the last council meeting is that, um, I am continuing to gather information about upgrades to the council chambers, uh, things that maybe are needed or just other municipalities have. And so we can see what types of things we can put into place. Um, so I am very excited because there were a couple of clerks that actually reached out and said, um, at the conference said we could come visit to see what they've done, uh, in the past few years. So I'm, I'm very excited to see that for the future.
Thank you, Jenny. Ashley?
Um, our, our walk auction is next Tuesday at five thirty. Well, where we'll auction off the eighteen crescent moons that are in Story Gardens. Um, that night is also the Friends and Milton Public Library Business after five through the chamber. Um, so come learn about the Friends group and then maybe go home with a crescent moon. Um, funds raised from the auction will go towards the continued development and maintenance of Story Gardens. Um, over the last three months, the library saw over twenty-six thousand visitors. So I want to give a shout out to the library staff for the amazing work that they did and continue to do. Um, now we're concentrating on our school district partnership, um, scheduling classroom visits, tours of the library and collaborative programming, so.
Exciting. Thank you. Chief?
Uh, with school back in gear, um, our shift from summer patrols kind of changed a little bit. So we'll be spending a lot more time in the school district. Um, we've done some recent training, um, all of our officers completed or are in the process this next couple of weeks of completing, uh, emergency vehicle operation and pursuit driving. Um, that's all hosted through, uh, County Sheriff's Office. Um, a few of our officers attended rescue task force training through Mercy Health in Janesville. And that's a combination of first responders, along for specifically responding with EMS and fire to an active threat scene. Um, which is something that hasn't been highly trained on in the past and it's definitely something of necessity. Um, Officer Schneider, who recently joined the county SWAT team, uh, attended a week-long SWAT school, um, which was quite in-depth at Waukesha Tech this last week. Um, and we had several officers assist with school district orientation, um, school district Milton orientation with, uh, drug trends, crime, crime prevention, um, reporting processes and other topics with their new staff and some of the returning staff. And then we had a few officers attend the, um, Special Olympics event at Texas Roadhouse, um, last week for the tip a cop event. We did not personally take the tips, um, they were turned over to Special Olympics for those athletes in, uh, southeast Wisconsin. Um, other than that, um, as Mark said, business as usual with just this little change for, um, school patrols kicking off a little bit more.
Right, thank you. All right, so next our team building exercise, which the question, don't run off or you, you lose your public comment privileges for a year. Kidding. Yes, no. What is your first, your first job, first job you ever had?
So Mayor, if it's okay, I'll answer your question of the team building. But can I make a comment to the gentleman that, uh, that spoke at the public comments real quick? If that's appropriate or not?
If it was on the agenda item, absolutely. If it wasn't, then we don't, uh, comment or interact on that just because it wasn't part of the agenda.
That's all right. Then I won't interact with that. So my first job is, uh, and Chief will smile when he hears this, uh, was at my uncle Butchy's Body Shop in Fort Atkinson, detailing cars, which is highlight and all body, uh, when I was fourteen years old.
Um, I worked at my small town local airport fueling airplanes and mowing the lawn.
I want a fun one, but cousin subs. I know. I know. It's not fun.
I was a caddy.
I was a paper boy. Gazette.
I worked in the dining room at the George Williams College campus. It's in Williams Bay.
I, uh, coached track and middle school track and field.
I was the carpet golf director at Table Rock State Park. I worked the putt-putt.
I cleaned the cages at Milton Veterinary Clinic, uh, sixteen.
I was a window washer and painter.
Nursery home.
Nursery home, Orion.
I was a farmhand, worked on farms.
Well, in terms of working other than for my parents on our farm, um, working for another farmer cultivating corn and baling hay and cleaning calf pens, all that good stuff. Yep.
Lord it out, it's all good.
First like officials.
Uh, standard, uh, young boy stuff. I was, uh, mowing lawns, shoveling snow. Spent my first paying gig at Pizza Hut. First night on the job, I was robbed at gunpoint.
Oh, my gosh.
Locked in the freezer and, uh,
Jesus.
Was that your last name?
Did you continue to work there?
I was a ticket night.
Much better.
Portageons, septic tanks and party tents. How lessons learned.